It's 5:30. We'll call to order the September 4th, 2024, meeting of the City Council of Cresco, Iowa. Roll call.
Carmen.
President.
Buska.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
We'll act on the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the agenda. Number two, approval of the claims. Number three, minutes from August 19th, 2024. Number four, approval of a special Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service to Atomic Pizza Pub, LLC, DBA Atomic Pizza Pub, expanded outdoor service area for memorial event for September 14th, 2024. Number five, approval of street closing for portions of Second Avenue West for Stephen Stone/Atomic Pizza Pub to expand patio for memorial event on September 14th, 2024. Number six, approval of parade permit for portions of Schroeder Drive, Third Avenue East, and North Elm Street for the homecoming parade on September 27th, 2024. Number seven, approval of a street closing permit for portions of Valley Manor Drive for a block party for Robbie and Vicky Howard on September 18th, 2024. And number eight, approval of a street closing permit for portion of the alley between 112 and 114 North Elm Street for a celebration in a private parking lot on October 5th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Buska.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes. Staff reports, Public Works.
We've got a few things on Seventh Street buttoned up yet, waiting for Gen X on that. They did start, Gen X started mowing around the new pond out there today. There's, when it was kind of finished off this year, they planted a bunch of ryegrass and some other stuff, and the weeds kind of took over, and rocks and so on. So they're out there today getting that mowed. I know, I think Gary, you said you went out and looked at it. I saw it before they were done, but it looks pretty good. It's probably something we'll continue to do once, twice, three times a year, depending on how it grows in the future. And we might have to add an additional tile line along the channel out there because it's continually running water from somewhere in Highway 9. And so we might put a tile line directly into the tile line under the bed of the pond.
And the purpose of that is so we can get that seeded, correct?
Get it seeded, get it dried up, so there's not always water there, basically, too. And the water in the pond, you know, is supposed to go away in 48 hours. There's a few spots where it's not. So talking with Scott Hunnicky, they're going to maybe talk about going in and churning it up a little bit and adding some sand and things like that. So the water does drain away. So we got a few things to do out there. I think they're going to start on the fence next to the channel and the recycling center here pretty quick. I know Lucas Merritt was in yesterday or day before, and he said they've been contacted and so on. So that's, that's good. Up on Ninth Street East, when CIT was here televising the sewer, they found some bad spots in the sewer main there, and it's not that old, you know, from the early 2000s. And there's a few spots where the joints have dropped, well, not that far, probably two inches or so. And you can see where there's some dirt coming in, so we need to get that replaced. And they might start on it this week to get that done. It's probably gonna, I don't remember how many feet, it's going to be maybe in front of a couple houses up there. But it's something we do need to fix. Otherwise, it could potentially plug.
Is that like in about the 10, 1000 block of?
Yep, I would say if.
Because there's a big dip in the, in the curb there.
Could be. It's, it's in front of maybe Third and Fourth Houses coming south from 12th. Yep. Yep. So that's supposed to get done this week. It won't be a huge project, maybe a day or two at the most. And I don't know if anybody drove down the street here near Notre Dame today, but there's a sewer line going in there for the building that Weitzel Trucking owns. He's never had sewer in there, and the closest was to dig straight north across First Avenue there. So that's, I didn't come by there on the way now, but I know they're working on that today. And then we kind of started last week talking about trailer parking and RV parking and stuff in the streets. And the chief and I have been talking a little bit about it. He found an ordinance from another city that pretty much bans, bans that there's certain things that can park for a certain amount of hours and so on. But I think we're going to talk about it a little more and maybe discuss it at our next council meeting. It's, you know, in the summertime, it's a lot of boats and campers and stuff, and those probably are going to be there in the winter, but we still need to keep the streets clean. And sometimes it kind of plugs things up. So we'll probably talk about that at the next meeting.
Police?
Well, for the month of August, there was a few items that were up a little bit. We had some assault calls in August, up a little bit more than usual. Hospital medical assist calls were pretty high, and our theft calls were pretty high through the month of August. Offspring's been doing good with traffic and just keeping busy. And school's been going good for us. Blake is currently at training with Emmy Lou right now, so it sounds like she's doing really well. She's kind of head of the class. They said that she's basically the Cadillac of the class right now. So I think we have ourselves a well-driven canine unit. Another thing I want to talk about is, so back on August 20th, at 2 o'clock, had a meeting with Brody with EMA, and then also Bruce Fisher with Federal Signal. He came up to kind of gauge what we would need for another tornado siren in town. And so we took him around. He looked at some of our units. We've got any that range from the 1950s up to the 2000s. The one that's a 1950 model is the one off by the fairgrounds. And he said, back in the, back in the day, it used to have like a 900-foot range, but it's probably degraded over time. It probably doesn't carry a 900-foot range on it anymore. He did look at some of the placements of some of our sirens. He said that he would suggest maybe a slot with one of the sirens moving to the downtown area and moving that one to the southern part, because the one that's in Evans Park right now is a very good siren, because that's a very good omnidirectional siren. He thinks that would cover more area downtown than where it's currently placed. And then he is going to get us some numbers together. He's going to do some, some graphs and whatnot showing area of coverage and where the best placement would be. And with some of the new sirens that Federal Signal has, they're no longer three-phase units, so you don't have to have that much power going to them. He goes, single phase would suffice, especially with solar backup. So he's going to give us a detailed report, and I'll get that to you guys and share it with you as soon as I can.
We found one county that was doing away with their sirens.
Yeah, Clinton County is actually getting away from their sirens, countywide.
Why is that?
They just fill as though with technology, there's no need to have the mechanical sirens anymore, because everybody's got a cell phone, pretty much.
And I think the cost that they were looking at, too, was a big chunk of money.
That was a big chunk of money.
And I know it was discussed on social media after the last big storms went through, that they can't hear the sirens in, in their house. And the sirens are actually designed for people outside, not inside. So.
Yeah.
Karen's going to ask.
Typically, if a storm's rolling through, you're probably going to be inside the house.
Yeah. But the sirens, the sirens do perform a service at night, and not everybody in this modern day and age has all the technology. So.
No, and I think it's, it's more of, you know, the sirens are just kind of a, it's just a little standby. You know, we all grew up with them, and we still depend upon that audible signal outside to get us, you know, going. Because I know a lot of us are still up during severe weather, and we're just looking outside unless we hear those sirens.
Then they go downstairs.
Yeah.
Gary, can, can you hear the siren inside your house?
When it works, it peels the paint off the wall.
Really? Because I, I can barely hear it inside my house.
See, and that's why we're looking for coverage. You know, he made a good point with the, the north siren. He goes, yeah, it'll cover the south side, some of your east side, some of your west, but he goes, it's going across to a 40-acre field on the north side. He goes, that's kind of a pointless position there. But he's going to go ahead and get all the grass up for us.
I think that. One of the fairgrounds, I can, when, when that goes off, when you're testing, or at night, I can hear that very well from my place. But it all depends upon the wind, too.
Yeah, that's.
I think that article stated that those sirens were originally placed for air raids.
Yeah.
And, you know, probably after World War II or thereabouts. And if the one at the fairgrounds is from 1950, that'd be about the right timeframe.
About the right time. And plus, too, I suppose they figured with that being such a, you know, large event area for the community, that they better have some kind of a warning system up there.
So those cell phone alerts, the law enforcement center can trigger those?
I know that Brady's, or Brody, said that you can sign up through a website service through Iowa, where you'll get those alerts. Our dispatch does not go ahead and, you know, just put that out to everybody's cell phone.
But I did notice this last time. I did get one on my cell phone.
Oh, I got it.
You know, if you've got KWW on your phone, whatever, a lot of times if there's a tornado warning in this area, but they're making them more specific in certain areas. So like, the tornado sirens, so that tornado that went through Winnebago County, six miles north of Decora, Decora didn't set off the sirens, because the National Weather Service said, why? It's a specific area is what we're looking at for a storm. We're not looking in Decora or Kalmer or any of those places. So they try not to set off the county-wide tornado sirens anymore, just for a specific area that's close and they think it's within the path.
Yeah, because it's hard to miss those cell phone alerts when they go off. They make a lot of noise.
Yeah, it'll make you jump.
Yeah. I thought maybe when they triggered the siren, the same people could trigger the cell phone alerts and.
No. You've got to be signed up for certain services in order to receive those.
I think mine must have come from the Weather Service, because I'm not signing up for any of that stuff.
Yeah, and I think mine comes through the National Weather Service.
It's like those, what do they call it?
Amber alerts or something.
Amber alerts. Yeah, those same thing. It triggers all the cell phones. So I don't know who's doing that.
I know that Iowa does have a specific website. I can get that from Brody for you guys, but he said there is a specific website that you can go on. It'll give you, you know, those alerts for in your area.
Yeah, I, it's, well, it says it's coming, Howard County Alert is the header on mine.
Typically, if the sirens and alerts go off, everybody goes outside to look anyway.
But yeah, if you could get that information, we could put it on our website, just because I know that I had to sign up for this one from the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administration?
Tax payments, you guys were talking about it a couple weeks ago. So we have currently 26 active with an assessed value of 2.8, 2 million 888,000. We have 20 that have just expired or will expire this year, totally another 968,000. So that's when people do improvements to their house or build house, build new houses. They get a reduction on their taxes. Tomorrow, we'll be, I will be attending the Northeast Iowa Regional League Meeting. CIP information will be coming out in the next week or so. And we'll also need to schedule a work session for union negotiations. If you guys want to do it before the next meeting, after meeting, complete standalone meeting, the next meeting would be the 16th. Any thoughts? Or I can send out a Survey Monkey or for the polls.
When, when do we think we're going to do negotiations?
I'm waiting to hear back from Aaron, but I'll send that out tomorrow.
Committee updates. I have, I have one from the Regional Housing Authority. The good news is they're going paperless and apparently is really helping things move along, that things can get processed faster. And they're hoping for even further improvements. At the time of the report, they had four ports. And now remember, a port is where somebody came, qualified for housing assistance in our region, and then moved back to Chicago or Minneapolis or wherever. And then we pay in Chicago. Have four ports we're being billed for. That's up from, one from the last time. And they thought that there was maybe one more coming. There's 62 rent vouchers on the street, meaning people have a voucher and they're looking for a house. And they're processing through the waitlist really quickly. They say a family will reach the top of the waitlist within a few weeks of applying, which is opposed to like years and years and years in Chicago. So things are, seem to be going pretty well. And, you know, you can think what you want, and I have opinions about transitions to paperless, but it appears to be doing really good there. And before we go into comments from the audience, I'd like to recognize Lonnie Lenahan from the Street Department for six years of service and thank him very much. And in fact, thank all of our employees. Now, comments from the audience for any items that are not on the agenda. We'll go into current business. There may be action taken on any of the items below. Number one, public hearing for rezoning property from C1 to R2. I'll open the public hearing. Any comments?
For BDMs, 4321 Vernon Road, and there were no written comments.
I received none.
Okay, no comments? No comments from the audience?
Do you want to hear from Matt now or?
Oh, yeah. Matt, you can tell us.
Come on up.
I guess the reason I asked for it, because it was zone commercial. And then basically what we want to do is, so Dave Jertina and then Schmidt, Finney Schmidt, the ones we just finished with the three-car garages, I don't know if you can type that there. If you can just picture that and flip it over, and then they're still going to be facing each other. And in order to get the depth, I needed another like 15-foot residential or a commercial end, and I have like a 40-foot set back or something. So.
So that, yeah, pretty much the whole reason for the.
I didn't even realize it was commercial.
Yeah.
It never even crossed my mind, because there was a house on there.
And yeah, that's kind of odd. And there's a lot of spots like that around town, but that's a different subject. So we're a different time, but.
And not, you contacted the neighbors, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I made my head.
That's called delegation.
Your goal is to get building as soon as you can, right?
Yeah.
For it to beat the, beat the winter.
Yeah, so we can kind of work through it in the winter. I have one for, I mean, ones already spoken for, so they might be available next summer.
So the house is all gone. Did you demolish the house over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, cleaned up nicely.
Yeah, a big huge improvement there.
How pretty, did you have to reach out? How many people did you talk to for this?
I don't think I sent them.
I've got the list.
300 feet, 300 feet. And had to have at least 50% of the property owners by area agree with it.
I got 19 of them.
Yeah. We had no issues, no feedback with nobody.
No.
Okay.
Okay. No other comments in the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing. Thanks for coming, Matt. And item two is first reading of the proposed ordinance 516, which amends Chapter 165 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa. Zoning change for 321 Vernon Road from C1 to R2. Ordinance 516 and ordinance amending Chapter 165 of the City of Cresco, Iowa by authorizing change of zoning from C1 Commercial District to R2 Light Density Residential District and updating the Cresco zoning map for the property described herein. Chapter 165 zoning code and map, be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Section 1, purpose of this ordinance is to change the present zoning classification and on the zoning map for the following property description, which is currently zoned as C1 Commercial District, parcels of property 321 Vernon Road to be rezoned to the R2 Light Density Residential District. Lot 1517 X East 200 feet, Lot 17 and X West 17.8 feet north, 61.5. Lot 17 IR survey east, half east, half northeast, Howard County, Iowa. Section 2, severability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole, or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section 3, ineffective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Hassan.
Go ahead. I'm just going to say, if we've had this and we've got approval from all these people, is it necessary to go through with two more readings of this?
You can waive other readings. The only problem is if anybody actually wanted to come, they wouldn't have noticed that you're going to waive the, waive it. I mean, if you want to waive the, the third one, I can put it on the agenda for next time.
But it doesn't have to be on the agenda to waive the second one.
My understanding is it does. You need a resolution to do it.
Because the, I know Winnebago County just did it and waived the two readings, and I don't think that was on the agenda, but.
Well, it, as, as musical as it is, I don't think it's really tough to read it.
My understanding is a couple years ago, they did it for a rezoning, and a person who objected to it was out of town and did not know about it. And they waived the second and third reading. And by the time they got back, he couldn't voice an opinion.
We've talked to everybody. We have no feedback. This has been going on for, we're running out of, running out of summer and fall. So.
But if, if both reading, all three readings are read today, then, then we're done, right?
Yeah.
They can start.
Well, we can't, because, because the agenda's already published for today. What Nikki said is.
My understanding is you need a resolution to waive the second.
No, I'm saying that you, you go ahead and you read the second and third readings today.
We can't do that, because it's not on the agenda.
Correct.
I don't, like I said, I don't think it has to be to waive them. I think that's a council decision, but that's up to you guys and gals. So.
Well, the, the agenda that was published specifically says it's the first reading.
Right.
Right. And you don't have a motion, you don't have a resolution to waive the second, third, nor to approve the ordinance.
You need a motion to waive that, or do you?
It's a resolution, yeah. I mean, I can add the third one next time if you want. So then you just have to do the second reading and waive the third, and then you make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I mean, that would get the notice out.
And that keeps us straight and above board. Does the next meeting is September 16th?
And then it won't take effect until it's been published at that point.
But that's pretty soon after.
It'd be the following week, so the 25th at the earliest.
I will make that motion to have that reading, second and third, on September 16th.
We don't need a motion to put on the agenda, do we?
No.
Okay. Well, but now we're voting on the first reading.
Excuse me.
Yeah, that's, but that's good. So.
Okay, so Carmen and McConnell?
Yes.
Okay. Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number three, public hearing for, sorry? Thank you, Matt. Number three, public hearing for proposed 2024 amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Cresco urban renewal area. We'll open the public hearing.
No written comments on that.
Dave, anyone contact you? Any public, nope. We'll close the public hearing. Number four, resolution determining in an area of the city to be an economic and blighted area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects, and adopting the 2024 amendment to the urban renewal plan for the Cresco urban renewal area.
So what this is doing for this and the next one for the ordinance 513 is there's two areas that are expiring, so it's removing those and adding the right-of-way that connects the current two sections, a couple sections that will still be active.
So we need a resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make that.
I'll circulate it.
Roll call.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes. Number five, first reading of the summary of proposed ordinance number 513, amending Chapter 138 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa for the 2024 amendment to the urban renewal plan. Summary of ordinance 513 and ordinance amending ordinance number 381 in providing that general property taxes shall no longer be divided on certain property located within the Cresco urban renewal area in the City of Cresco, County of Howard, State of Iowa, removing Commercial Urban Renewal Area Amendment Number 3 area, Commercial Urban Renewal Area Amendment Number 4 area, and adding the connecting right-of-way on Seventh Street West. Below is a summary of ordinance 513. A full copy of said ordinance may be obtained between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM weekdays at City Hall, 130 North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa 52136, or on the city's website at www.cityofcresco.com. Chapter 155 of the ordinance, Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa, urban renewal update. Purpose to amend the urban renewal area by removing Commercial Urban Renewal Area Amendment Number 3 and Commercial Urban Renewal Area Amendment 4 areas, and add right-of-way to connect the remaining portions of the area. Passed and approved on some date. Do we have a vote? Or questions?
This would be the first reading, too.
We need one.
To approve the first reading.
Yes.
Call it. Roll call.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Do you want that resolution to waive the third on this one as well?
Next, next time.
Next time?
Yes.
Any thoughts on that?
Second.
That one's pretty innocuous. Number six, Chris Trundle from Upper Explorer Land to discuss Northeast Iowa Regional Housing Trust Fund. Chris, you're up.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
I'm going to hand you out some information here. Thank you for the request for.
Thank you.
For the Northeast Iowa Housing Trust Fund. And so, I'll just run through some of this. So your first page that you got there is kind of the summary of the last three years. It's highlighted on the sheet and some pretty good, pretty good numbers with regards to the investments that you made to the trust fund. So for you guys that don't know, did you get everything? Who doesn't know, I guess I'm Chris Trundle, I'm with the Housing Trust Fund. And I've been at my job for over a year now and enjoying it. And I've been working in Cresco quite a bit, doing a number of different projects. As I said, the first page I hand you out is a request letter. Over the past three years, there's been $195,338.83 for the trust fund specific to it, is what your donation goes for, in order to get all the state money that is allocated to the market salary, the housing trust fund. So if you look at the number as it is, you guys give $8,000 yearly, and it's roughly about 700% return on investment. So pretty good, pretty good at return on investment. Now, on the other sheet that I gave you here, it is kind of an overview of, on the first page, of the projects for 23 and 24. So you kind of have an idea of, you know, what we did in the five counties. That's probably not extremely specific to you guys necessarily, even though there were a lot of projects in there. But one thing about the Housing Trust Fund, if you understand how it works, it does rehab and down payment assistance with the program. Most of our people who apply to this are, they have to be income-qualified, and most of them are, I would say, either young, just out of college, trying to get into a home. I know there's been a number of teachers that, in the area that had, especially Cresco here, that had moved in and bought some homes. Most of them are young women who are, who's in the area. And then the other part for the repair program, a lot of our clients that we have are, I don't want to say necessarily always elderly, but they're on disability or Social Security, so their incomes are not super high. But the one thing that the program does do is get people either into housing or repair housing, which is good for both the city who, like every. who, like every other city in Northeast Iowa and the state, you know, is looking for housing and to keep the housing stock in good shape. So that's really what it does and what it's able to do. So, if you look at the packet that I gave you, it gives an overview of, like I said, '23, '24, but if you open it up there, it kind of shows how much is spent per county. And here in Howard, the vast majority of the money that's spent is spent here in Cresco for some reason. It had a little uptick this year with some rural stuff, but to the most part, most of the money that's spent in Howard does come right here in Cresco. So, that's what the numbers were this year for the Housing Trust Fund. You can see the numbers for the three years, and then if you look at the overall, it kind of gives a perspective. The state is the green part that gives, so we have to come up with local match within our counties in order to get all the money. Now, the Housing Trust Fund, like I said, there's two parts to it. It's down payment assistance and repair. The money that is dropped back in, because not every one of the mortgages that goes out is forgivable, so there are some that are forgivable, some that are zero percent, so it's paying back what's borrowed, and some that are one and two percent, so very low interest. But the money that's recaptured with that goes into a revolving loan fund, which both Howard County as a whole and Cresco as a city got used. So we have demolition projects, which is later on in this packet, that you'll see for teardowns on nuisance homes and things in that order, housing studies, which I know you guys have used in the past. You know, there's a variety of different things. Plus it also assists with matching monies for other programs this year. I got a nice little repair program, which has been huge, and Howard County on that program alone had $171,072 utilized, and I'd say, all in all, probably over half of that was Cresco alone with those projects, so that's been very good. You did not have a home buyer. I also had a home buyer program this year. You did not have an actual home buyer within the city of Cresco. I did have a couple that originated in Cresco with one of the banks, so even though...and that was in a Winnaishie home, I guess, so...but the money didn't originate, you know, from here. But I don't count that as, you know, in Cresco or Howard County. So, some of the numbers, you know, are there, but, you know, it's a little deceiving in some cases, just depending on where that residence ends up. But when you look at the overall end of it, there's been...oh, what we got here? If you took the last page, all housing in '24, Howard's gotten close to about a little over $250,000 in terms of programming just in 2024 alone. So if you take your $195,000 for the last three years and add it to that, that's a pretty good return on investment. If you look at the overall aspect of it, we are also, you know, taking into account, like I said, it's much, much bigger than just the money spent. You know, we've got the banks that are, you know, employees, you know, that are getting paid through the loans that go out. We've got contractors. I use a lot of contractors here on Cresco over this last year. I've got a lot on...I've got over 90 some contractors now that we've never had before for these projects, and I anticipate this is gonna continue to grow as I have now been in there. So, we've been extremely successful with IFL Repair this year. State of Iowa got awards from the federal government, $11 million bucks. I got $1.21 million of that just for us alone, just by how I implemented it. I tend to find the way to get, like Amy, find the way to get our, you know, biggest bank for our buck out of it and try to make the most common sense, you know. I don't wanna say skirt the process, but do the best job I can. So, I anticipate doing the same. We've got some applications out for some more next year, looking at more home buyer programs along with the Housing Trust Fund, as long as we get our matching monies again, and then another possible repair program or two. So anyways, as you saw, you guys currently, and you're a great city that donates very generously. That's what I'm trying to do, especially the cities that, you know, are using a vast majority of the assets that we put in, trying to get them to get to a one level, our one project amount, which is $12,500. So one project is $12,500, and that's kind of what I'm asking for with a three-year commitment. It helps for budgeting purposes with that three-year commitment, and I know this year, you probably already have it budgeted. I don't think I've seen a pledge letter yet for '25, but I really need to get those in, if you guys are still willing to get that done, because of the grants and applications due in October. So, the sooner the better. So, I think I've already given Nikki the...just the blank pledge form over there for that to be filled out. But again, I'm looking for a three-year commitment, which helps us and helps you guys with budgeting, and maybe an increase up to that one level. And if you've already set your budget for the year, you know, maybe consider amending. If not, look at the next two years, if you have some interest with that to increase. So, I know it's a lot of talk, and I don't wanna bore you, but does anybody have any questions? It's pretty exciting stuff, what has happened this past year in terms of spending and projects being done. And I can go on and on about a lot of different things, but you guys really have it going on pretty good here, all in all.
So this is a state program, and no...it's not a federal program. It's administered by the state.
So the way the Housing Trust Fund works, it's like every other program, a lot of them out there, it comes from the federal government, which then trickles down to the state, which is awarded so much, and then each county's awarded, or each housing authority's awarded so much from there. So, no, it's not a federal program, but it is a state program, but the money kind of comes in from here.
So people that are utilizing this, how do they find out about it?
Boy, it is all over the board with that. I have been finding more and more with down payment assistance. Our banks are utilizing this a lot, though. A person goes in, you know, will have to first be pre-qualified with a bank in order to be able to get the loan, you know, to the vast majority of the mortgage, and then they'll come to us for help with down payment assistance. So, banks are one. Otherwise, we do have some people who have used the program before. Community Action refers to us. Different government agencies refer to us. Otherwise, people just hear it word of mouth, our newsletter, that people are starting to see even more and more, so, yeah.
Probably real estate agents do.
Real estate agents, absolutely. Insurance companies, yeah. It's kind of a mixed bag of a lot of different things. And like I said, the money, you know, it seems to be an awful lot, but it's actually a lot bigger than that when you take into account, you know, the number of jobs that are being, you know, created because of this. I went...I was at three different ones today. Two were closings for a program, for two different programs, and one was...they're in process. I mean, they're putting on the new roof, and I think there were nine people out there working. They just get to work, you know, the roof down. So if you think about what goes into that for global economy, you know, it's pretty impressive, you know. You know, I'm working with Mar Smith, I'm working with, I mean, just all the contractors here for the most part. Get to meet a lot of them, so...
So are some of these people are already own the home, live in the home, and they apply for assistance?
Down payment assistance for first-time home buyers, they will own their home, yes. For a repair program, they already own their home. So, I really encourage, and this is what O-line did with the repair program, so when you look at the...at this end here, you can see that Fayette County received a huge portion of money for the repair program this last year, and that's because the mayors, you know, reached out to some of these nuisance homes and said, you know, "Hey, you know, we got this program. Are you interested?" And, you know, some did it. I think I had some referrals because of you, Amy, up here. You must have mentioned it at a meeting, or I'm not quite sure. I don't know, but I got your name down there a couple times. So, but anyways, they heard in lots of different ways, so it's pretty impressive where they come up with things. But yes, everybody owns their own home. They pay taxes, current on everything. One of the...I don't think I had anybody in Howard County this year, definitely in Winnaishie, that with one of our other programs that I had overseen, it was mortgage, catching up on mortgages and taxes, and I think some of those got paid like, you know, $50,000 or better to get them all caught up. And some of these homes that are out there that, you know, have roofs, you know, you know how insurance is getting anymore. You can't insure it, you know, if it's a certain age, if the insurance company gets it. Well, they get these notices, and then, you know, a roof no longer costs $5,000, $6,000 to put on. You know, it's 12, 15, you know, depending on how big the house is. So, this actually gets these homes back to are, and is able to get them re, you know, insured again to make them good, so...
So somebody that's got a bad roof, they might travel down to see you, they talk to you about it, but you have them go out and get bids and...
Absolutely, yep, yep.
And then they have to pay a certain percentage, and this program pays a certain percentage.
Yep, yep.
What's the vetting process for this, if somebody comes and sees you?
It depends on each individual program, but it's all income-based. So, for the most part, you know, a person that makes, well, anything less than the 35% LMI, which is roughly about $33,000, would qualify at a forgivable rate. And then if you have, you know, dependents in the home, you know, so on and so forth, then the number goes up a little bit, you know, here and there. But it goes on all the way up. I mean, to not qualify, to be able to get like a...the highest we have is a 2% loan. To not qualify for a single person, I think you have to make almost $77,000. So, you know, coming to us for, you know, potentially up to $12,500 for a low-interest loan to fix the roof, you know, I would say probably 60% to 70% of all people living in Northeast Iowa qualify, you know, to be able to do that. We can by no means fix everybody's roofs. There'd never be enough money for that. But so, the vetting process, you know, it's...that's really what it is. You know, you gotta get your application in, you gotta get everything that I request with it, which is not a tremendously hard thing. Everybody has it, you know, their insurance, you know, their taxes. I can look on Beacon. You know, then two different contractors have to make a bid on it, so it's apples for apples, and, you know, usually we go with the lesser bid on that.
Do you pay the contractor then?
I pay the contractor directly. So usually the process is, we...I'll go into contract with them, they meet with the homeowner and me, you know, so the contractor, the homeowner are all on the same page, and then everything gets done, and then we'll meet out there again within a very short time. Usually it's within a week, and, you know, while the homeowner will sign off that the work has been done and complete, and then contractor will do the same. They sign everything, which is a matter of five minutes. I give them a check, and everybody's happy. So, it's a pretty quick, fast turnaround, depending on how quick the contractor gets to them. I think I've made the process a lot smoother and simpler for contractors, and I think that's why my numbers have just decreased. I think they've had a hard time over the years to even be able to get contractors to do this. I have no issue with it right now, and it's not because of looking forward. One of the hardest contractors I worked with was my brother, and I think he still is on the process now because he got paid, you know, right away, and that was the biggest concern, of waiting to get paid, and that's...so, I'm better off straight away. But, um, yeah, as a city, you guys are doing really well, and I continue to plan to do that. Spiff is our board president for the Northeast Iowa Housing Trust Fund, so, you know, she pushes pretty hard for me to hit things up here, and she also is referring people to take advantage of this program, and, yeah, it's pretty good. So, Cresco does very well. But like I said, the trust fund is only one piece of the overall puzzle. It's like the cornerstone of all the other programs, like the housing studies and the demolitions that happen. I can't see, just off the top of my head, if you guys have any nuisance homes that were taken down. The city can apply to get $10,000.
We have, a couple of years ago, yep.
There you go. I think there might be one that works now, to be quite honest. I think there's something that may not have been long ago, but maybe not. Maybe that's projected, I don't know. But, yeah, there's a tremendous advantage in just this program creating so much more, so it's a pretty good program. So if you guys will take a look at that and possibly get me that pledge letter soon, and hopefully within the next few weeks or less, that way I can get that moving for the next grant phase. And if you're interested and would, I will tell you that other cities and counties are falling in line with that three-year commitment and at that level. And once I get all the major cities to do that, hopefully we'll get some of the smaller ones joining us to do so. But I know how budgets are, as I say. You guys do really well. I'll say that in terms of you giving. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and I can attest that I know some of the houses where, particularly you've done the roof, and it just makes a huge difference.
It does. It really, really does, yep. Yep, and if you guys have any, you know, questions or referrals, always send them down. I'll tell you right now, we are out of money on every program I have. As you saw, that number in the end is almost $1.7 million just for these programs alone, and I've got a waiting list still, you know, that I just can't get through. So there's always a need. I think, in my opinion, the money is going to the right places, and it's been pretty impactful for a lot of things.
So when do you get more funding? When you're out of money?
January is usually when it goes. We're all...from what I can tell over the past years, usually they're out, you know, anytime between now and August anyways. You know, that's just kind of the nature of how it is. It's first come, first served, and, you know, in terms of that. So it's really, however, you know, people are active within the communities to get that word out, to, you know, have stuff done. So, it's pretty good. I...so, of the cities that, you know, utilize this the most, you know, naturally it's gonna be the larger ones. You guys, Decor, Walk On, O-line overwhelmingly, you know, always has some, you know, some because they're the biggest population, but that's what the type of our programs are at. Any questions?
Yeah, any additional questions?
Hard ones, if you got them.
No, we certainly appreciate you coming. Thanks, Chris.
Absolutely. And if I may ask, any idea, if you would?
So, in the fiscal year '25, we did budget 12.5. Usually we pay that in January. I'd be hesitant to commit to more than one year. I mean, you tend to look at it every year at budget time. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are.
As long as you're comfortable, we're getting a return on investment. And Amy, you've been with this program?
Well, I'm not actively involved, but I sit on the housing committee. It doesn't run this program, but it gets reports on it, and I think it's a wonderful program.
I will tell you, as long as I'm, you know, where I'm at, Cresco will continue to get, you know, the care that it does. And if you guys, as, you know, the board, you know, keep referring and, you know, moving forward, and Spiff is here, you know, doing the same. We've got, you know, the county board supervisors, which also have raised their...followed up to that one level, too. I will continue to do what I do for Cresco and Howard as a whole.
How long has this program been going?
Oh, probably, what is it, Amy, since 2010? 2009?
Ever since I've been involved.
It's been a fairly long time, yeah. So it's tried and true, and it's definitely growing, and I intend to keep growing. And at least, the Housing Trust Fund will probably remain close to the same, but the other programs that come with it, yeah, the sky's the limit as long as the funding's out there from either the state or the federal government, which is what I do, so...
Yes, Spiff is a real engine behind this. I think she worked with you to develop the demolition grants, right? And we've used it, other cities have used it. It's...
Yep.
I mean, there are some things you wish would be different about it, but it is what it is, and it helps.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
So if we're comfortable, we're getting a return on our investment, you know, that's the...
Well, you guys discuss. If I could get a commitment letter within, like I said, within the next few weeks, that'd be tremendously helpful with our grant proposal, because we have to be able to show that with the state that we have it, you know. So, that's probably the most important thing.
You said you're asking for $12,000?
12.5 level. So whatever you guys are comfortable with, you know, I...I'm... Twelve-five level, so whatever you guys are comfortable with, you know, I, I'm happy with where you guys have been in the past, it's just moving forward, there's just so much that can be done, and if we, yeah, it's always a struggle every year, and I'm taking it in a different direction, I don't want to have that struggle, I want to have that base so I can help as many people as possible.
And we've already got, we've already got the twelve-five in the budget, the issue that we would need to discuss.
We're good for January already.
Is going to be whether we want to make the commitment for.
If we've got the money, you know, the commitment for one year, really, wait.
That's, it's already in for January.
We'll do the one year, and figure the rest out at budget time.
Right. And if you guys want, I mean, things aren't going to change at this point now, in where I'm at, because I'm out of the availability to do any more programming this year, but if you would like me to come back for, you know, that, that time when you are budgeting, I sure would be more than happy to do so.
Thanks for coming up, I appreciate it.
We've got some extra copies there, if you want to hand them out, or however it works, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too.
And talk too long.
So this is one of the, where you guys declare the 28E public purpose in January, so that's why we can make the commitment.
It's 20E.
Twenty-eight E.
Number seven, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended professional service agreement with WHKS and Company for the Cresco wastewater treatment plant age-related equipment replacement. I see that Angie's here, did you want to say anything, Angie?
Certainly, yeah. Maybe I'll just, in sixty seconds or less, summarize what this amendment is. As you know, at the wastewater plant, that project for the age-related equipment replacement was bid and awarded to Lozic, and so it's moving into design, in construction phase, and this amendment is for construction phase engineering services, including observation on part-time basis, engineering oversight and assistance, chapter review, control point setting, construction testing coordination and SRF compliance, payroll, report reviewing as well. So this agreement is set up on an hourly basis, and the estimate is based on it lasting for the duration of the construction project, which is through the end of December of 2025.
Any questions for Angie?
So it's basically time and materials.
So we need a resolution to approve that, I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Thanks for coming, Angie.
Thank you very much.
Number eight, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fair Graham for the infiltration inflow evaluation.
So this was on the agenda, just to follow up from, I think it was a June work session. So Fair Graham did provide a draft letter to submit to the DNR with an action plan for the INI down on the south side. We've looked over the agreement, and at this time, we think we should table it, give the sewer department a chance to talk with WHKS. I know they talked with Angie this morning, and he got some more information, so at this time, we, the sewer plant thinks we should put it on hold.
Table it.
Yes, to table it.
Okay. You don't need a vote to table it?
Nope.
Number nine, second reading of proposed ordinance 514, which amends Chapter 165 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa. Zoning change for 114 Seventh Street West from M1 to C2, this is the county land again. Ordinance 514 and ordinance amending Chapter 165 of the City of Cresco, Iowa by authorizing change of zoning from M1 mixed use to C2 central business commercial district and updating the Cresco zoning map for the property described herein. Chapter 165 zoning code and map, be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Section one, purpose of this ordinance is to change the present zoning classification on the zoning map for the following property description, which is currently zoned as M1 mixed. Parcels of property at 114 Seventh Street West be rezoned to the C2 central business commercial district. Lot 2A, Lot 1-1-2, Lot 2-7, and Lot 2 of 2 and 100 feet R-R-R-O-W-I-R survey southeast, and Lot 2 of 7 southwest, Howard County, Iowa. Section two, severability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication as provided by law. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Oh, okay.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska? Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Item 12, first reading of the summary of proposed ordinance number 508, amending Section 69.10 and Section 70.03, and adding Chapter 82 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to declaring a snow emergency, parking regulations, and parking violations. Summary of ordinance 508, in ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by adding provisions pertaining to declaring a snow emergency, parking regulations, and parking violations. Below is a summary of ordinance 508. A full copy of said ordinance may be obtained between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM at weekdays at City Hall, 130 North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa 52136, or on the city's website at www.cityofcresco.com. Purpose, implement an ordinance for declaring snow emergency when snow accumulates to a depth of two inches or more, and modifying the parking regulations and violations. Section one, modifying Section 69.10 and 70.03, and adding Chapter 82 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa. The fine for violating parking restrictions except improper use of a person's with disabilities' parking permit is twenty dollars and will increase to twenty-five dollars after thirty days. Pursuant to Iowa Code Section 321.40, a list of all delinquent and unpaid parking fines will be provided to the county treasurer for collection. All fines must be paid prior to renewing any motor vehicle registrations. The simple notice of a fine for improper use of a person's with disabilities parking permit is one hundred dollars. Section two, severability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication as provided by law.
So moved.
Wait a minute, just, just want to understand this, okay? If there's a, there's a building downtown, one of them could be a business place, and there could be three, three residents upstairs, three apartment buildings, if one apartment building doesn't pay their bill, you shut the water off to the whole building?
Correct.
That would be the same for any residential as well.
So whenever somebody is delinquent on their bill, and we're getting ready to post them, we send a copy of that notice to the landlord, and they have the opportunity to not have it shut off.
But the business part is separate from?
Right, but there's only one shut off.
So they would get shut off?
Okay.
That's the problem, there's, there's one shut off, but you can put as many meters behind it as you want.
I'm just, when they're shutting the water off, you're shutting the water off to the entire building.
Correct. Then the landlord would have the opportunity to either let it be turned off, get the tenant to come in and pay the bill, or they could pay it themselves, and then they could, that would be between them at that point. Right now, if a tenant doesn't pay the bill, and they move out, I mean, at this point, we are doing the lien exemption, or not the lien exemption.
The shut off notice would go to the apartment building and the landlord.
Correct. And we do offer landlords get copies of the bill each month as well, so they'd be able to keep up on it.
Any other questions? Take a motion to approve?
I did that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
Item 11, approval of ordinance 512 pertaining to water meters.
So moved.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
Number 11, approval of ordinance 512 pertaining to water meters.
So moved.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Item 12, first reading of the summary of proposed ordinance number 508, amending Section 69.10 and Section 70.03, and adding Chapter 82 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to declaring a snow emergency, parking regulations, and parking violations. Summary of ordinance 508, in ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa by adding provisions pertaining to declaring a snow emergency, parking regulations, and parking violations. Below is a summary of ordinance 508. A full copy of said ordinance may be obtained between 8:00 AM and 4:30 PM at weekdays at City Hall, 130 North Park Place, Cresco, Iowa 52136, or on the city's website at www.cityofcresco.com. Purpose, to implement an ordinance for declaring snow emergency when snow accumulates to a depth of two inches or more, and modifying the parking regulations and violations. Section one, modifying Section 69.10 and 70.03, and adding Chapter 82 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa. The fine for violating parking restrictions except improper use of a person's with disabilities' parking permit is twenty dollars and will increase to twenty-five dollars after thirty days. Pursuant to Iowa Code Section 321.40, a list of all delinquent and unpaid parking fines will be provided to the county treasurer for collection. All fines must be paid prior to renewing any motor vehicle registrations. The simple notice of a fine for improper use of a person's with disabilities parking permit is one hundred dollars. Section two, severability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage approval and publication as provided by law.
So moved.
Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
Item 13, resolution establishing a fund within the city's accounts, Fund Number 326, aging equipment replacing, replacement project.
So this is setting up funds, we can easily track the aging equipment out of the sewer plant and the SRF loan.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Basson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska? Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.